Good evening. This is the Planning Board meeting of November 29, 2016. And this is being on, this is on Area 58 Community Access Media. If we could please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight, first on the agenda is a discussion, Williams Brothers Inc., preliminary subdivision plan for a proposed 10-lot conservation subdivision off of High Street. Map 30-10-6-7 and S with a proposed layout for Yule Street under Chapter 41, Section 81-L. And it's filed with the town clerk November 1, 2016. The last meeting was December 6, 2016. Good evening.
I think it was November.
So Bruce, your deadline, your deadline to make your decision and file your decision is December 16. So the last available meeting for you to vote is December 6.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. I'm Katie Connery from Stantec, and I'm here with Jack Williams of Williams Brothers. And like you said, it's 26-acre lot roughly, and we're proposing a 10-lot conservation subdivision. Since the original submittal, we've revised the conventional plan and the conservation plan, both of which you should have received, you know, last week. And they were revised based on comments from Marlene and at our last planning board meeting. The conventional plan was revised to eliminate the rear lot. There was, you know, we weren't sure whether that rear lot was valid there, so we simply revised lot lines, I think it was 7, 8, 9, and 5, 6, 7, and 8, and eliminated that rear lot. So that every lot in that conventional yield complies with the dimensional requirements. The conservation subdivision plan, the 10-lot, we briefly mentioned at the end of the meeting that each lot needed 50 feet of frontage, and we did have a lot on there, I think it was Lot 8, that had 40 feet. So we simply revised lot lines 7, 8, and 9 very, you know, slightly, just to allow that 50-foot width and at least just over 50 feet of frontage. So every lot there complies with the, I forget which section of the 3,800 of the zoning bylaw. The roadway layout, the stormwater design, the grading of the roadway, all changed, stayed the same. That did not change. The only other change on the conservation, the 10-lot conservation, we incorporated one note based on the fire department. They, they, they mentioned that the existing woods road, let me scroll to this page here. This is the revised plan. The existing woods road goes through Lot 8 to the, and has access to the open space back here. The whole western portion, this is a 26-acre lot, so there's a good chunk, I think about 15 acres, that's open space. They wanted, the fire department wants that area, that existing woods road to be surfaced with an all-weather, you know, surface 12 feet wide, I think it was 12 feet wide, and cleared on two feet each side. So we added that. All other, you know, comments from Fasson O'Neil with regard to the stormwater, like I mentioned at the last meeting, that would be revised and incorporated into the definitive subdivision plans. And the biggest change there would be some kind of pretreatment device, such as a storm scepter, some pretreatment device prior to the stormwater getting into the allegiance system.
Does anybody have any questions? Oh, Marlene, you know, what, you reviewed the plans. Do you have final thoughts?
No, I agree with all of the revisions, so I can recommend, you know, you guys can move this forward to the definitive stage. The yield plan meets your minimum requirements, and the conservation subdivision as well as set up for, you know, for a special permit if you decide to do that. So, you know, the bylaw is taken care of.
So this will come before us again as the definitive plan?
Right, so the next step-
As a conservation subdivision.
Right, so the next step is, is actually two parts. A definitive subdivision to create the layout and the lots, and a special per, you have to issue a special permit for the open space subdivision that requires that you make certain findings under a special permit. So this is kind of just the rough draft of it, to make sure that it's doable. But this, but you can't actually, you don't actually approve a preliminary plan, you can't record them, they can't be appealed, they're just, you know, essentially guidance for the definitive plan.
So we don't have any vote on this, do we?
Yeah, I did, if the board doesn't have any more questions, I did put together a motion for you, just to put something on record that, at this stage, we agree, that you agree with the design of it. So, and I did set that up as a vote, just for, you know, to close the loop on this application.
So that's this, this letter?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Before I read this. All right, so at its meeting of November 29, 2016, the Planning Board voted to approve the preliminary subdivision plan of William Brothers Inc. for a 10-lot subdivision off of High Street, as shown on the plans entitled "Giblet Estates Preliminary Conservation Subdivision Plan, Yule Street, Located Off High Street, Carver, Mass., Prepared by Stantec, Dated October 25, 2016, Last Revised November 11, 2016. Scale 1 inch equals 50 feet with the following findings and conditions." Findings, the Planning Board finds that the conventional yield plan and the preliminary conservation subdivision design meet the minimum dimensional standards under the zoning bylaw. Two minor waivers are anticipated as part of the definitive plan application. The Planning Board will defer to the Conservation Commission for specific requirements for the culvert designed to cross the intermittent stream just off of High Street. The comments received from the Carver Fire Department and Fasson O'Neil regarding the drainage system design will be further reviewed as part of the definitive subdivision and special permit application. And then we have a couple of conditions. The applicant is, one is the applicant is encouraged to advance the design and apply the plan, and apply to the Planning Board for a definitive plan and special permit for a conservation subdivision, and two, all work proposed within the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission shall be separately permitted under the Carver Wetline Regulations. And that's it. So entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plan with the condition.
Suck it up. So we have a motion, a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're all set.
Thank you.
And we'll sign this tonight.
Yeah, if you could sign it, and I'll file it with the town clerk, and then send off the papers.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is a sign permit for Just For You Nutrition Store at 2 Montello Street.
There's, the packet should be, or the application should be in your packet. Sorry, did I, I'll give you, I'll give you. It does meet all of your dimensional standards in your bylaw.
Okay. Oh, so this is in the marketplace?
Yes.
All right. And so they're just going to put a sign up in front of the store?
Yeah, just on a wall-mounted sign above the, above the door.
And they're going to put one?
And then they're going to put one on, they've run out of space on their ladder board, so, on their directory sign, so they're going to put it vertically, which, I didn't see anything that prohibited that, so.
Is that a change? Would that consist of a change of their marquee board?
The panels, I mean-
No, it was approved, because that's not an approved panel location.
Has, has the board ever run into this before? Because, so, I mean, their sign is set up with the spaces kind of all, and they're all full now. And I, I don't really know how to, I mean, the wall sign is fine, and usually the tenant wouldn't be responsible for necessarily changing the directory sign?
No, but I, I don't think that we're going to approve them to put it there if that's defined or shown in the picture, because that's not what was allocated in the approved marquee for space allocation.
Okay, so do you just want to approve the wall sign and not the panel on the directory?
I think the owner of the property would have to come in and modify-
Okay.
-your application to allow that, or to allow, to change the dimensions of these signs, so that way to allow it in that space.
Okay.
So I don't think it meets what the previous board had approved. It's nice to see it full, though.
So I can certainly add that condition that you can approve the wall sign and not the directory sign, and have that be modified to accommodate a horizontal, horizontal panel.
How could they go about doing that? Is that, could they raise that, that whole?
They would have to, they would have to come in and demonstrate to you how they wanted to do that.
Yeah. I think that's, yeah, that's a good idea, though, to have them do that. I mean, it's got to be straightened out one way or the other.
Yeah, otherwise it's going to get too out of uniform. And plus, you'd want, you'd want the new business to have the same, same exposure and the same uniformity as the other ones.
Right, yeah.
I don't think they have, I don't think we can just let it happen that way without them coming back in to modify that marquee.
Anybody else have any thoughts about this?
I'm on the same page with going forward with it on the business, but we definitely should probably have the, the owner of the property come in and see what we can do as far as making that work.
Okay.
Marlene, do you know if this says lights on the one on the building?
No, lights are proposed.
Do we know how many businesses are in there? So this would make an eighth business, or is this going to take over a place of business?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question.
There was a hydrophonic plant-
Yeah, there was. There's a vac, there's a vacant storefront in there, which I'm assuming this is going into, but I don't see where the space on the sign would have accommodated that other store.
That's why I'm trying to get to that.
Yeah.
Part of that.
It seems like the spaces on the sign don't match the number of stores.
The existing sign, just, the existing signs, you can see some of them extremely large, and then the other ones choked down.
Mm-hmm.
So they probably did that just for the exposure part. I'm sure when they first initially came in front of the board, they did the, redid the marquee for the amount of space, rental spaces that they had.
Mm-hmm.
Well, since then, yeah, then Dunkin' Donuts came about, so.
Yeah, and that's kind of off the, that's not in the ploso.
So I guess we could entertain a motion to approve with the exception of not putting the sign on the marquee until the owner, or until they decide to do it properly, the way that we think that it should be done.
So I have written up that the panel on the directory sign is not approved, the directory sign must be modified to hold another horizontal patter, panel.
Make a motion to approve the sign for You Nutrition Store, 2 Montello Street, would be approved, conditions to include a building permit there.
So we have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll move on to the Planning Board's role in the North Carver Urban Renewal Plan local approval process.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I am going to excuse myself, as I am the chairman of the Redevelopment Authority.
So in your packets tonight, you have some draft materials for you to take home and take a look at. I don't want, I don't want you to, I'm not asking you to do anything tonight, but I just want to explain what you, what you are eventually going to be asked to do as part of this plan. When you, when you have a chance to read these, you'll see that they're still in progress, you know, they're, they're redlined draft versions, so I, you will be getting a final version when it's available, but we are still working on it. As you probably know, the Redevelopment Authority has been working over a couple of months over the summer and last spring for this redevelopment area that contains the old Whitworth property, that is how you probably know it, the, which is a, an expended sand and gravel pit up in North Carver, just north of 44, kind of in the corner, northwest corner of the town. And you have a series of maps and the materials that have been presented. As, there's a number of steps in the local approval process before the, before a plan can be submitted to the state for review. There's three local votes that have to happen. The Redevelopment Authority has to vote, essentially to, that they endorse the plan and, you know, they want to move forward the plan. And they, they vote first, because it's, an urban renewal plan is under the jurisdiction of a Redevelopment Authority, so they, they kind of move it, they move, they take the first step, and they move the ball forward first. Secondly, the local planning board has to make two findings, and your vote is very, your vote is very specific. You have to, you as a board have to decide that you can find that the plan is in concert with a master plan for the, for the community, that it, you know, it is moving forward goals or objectives that have been, you know, have been voted and, and a part of, you know, the community's planning. And when you, when you see, when you have a chance to look through the plan, you'll see a section where we have outlined kind of all of the prior plans and documents that have been building up to this point, because it's been, you know, redeveloping the Whitworth parcel has been kind of a long-term process for this town, and you have a well-documented track record of, of, you know, moving it forward in your economic development planning, your, your planning for the North Carver Water District, your planning, your master planning. So that's one thing that, that's one vote you would have to take, is that you find that it's compliant with, with your master plan. And then, secondly, you have to make a finding that it's based on a local survey, and, and we don't, the words, the word "survey" is not necessarily what we, how we usually use the word "survey," it's not an on-the-ground instrument survey, like, like we're used to talking about. What, what the state is asking for is that the Planning Board finds that it's based, that the methodology that developed the plan is based on a review of, like, on-the-ground conditions and, and most, and accurate and up-to-date information. So the, as, when you read the draft plan, you will see that we've laid out the methodology that we've used, including numerous site visits and, you know, and tours of the area to be familiar with the conditions. The most recent assessor's data has been used, the most recent public records for the properties that we have have been utilized. So your, so the Planning Board's role in this is, is limited to those two findings, that you, you find that it's harmonious with your master plan, and that, that the plan was put together using essentially real data as, and, and as it exists today, and not based necessarily on out-of-date data, or, or not based on real visits to the site and real conditions. So those are the two things that you'll be asked to do. The third local vote is, is by the Board of Selectmen. They are responsible for holding the public hearing on the plan, and they, after the public hearing, they would vote either yes or no to submit it to the state. So there are three local votes that will eventually need to happen, and this is one of them. So this is just an introduction to your role at this point. And of course, until the plan is, you know, complete, we wouldn't ask you to vote on anything until you had a complete plan in front of you, but I wanted, you know, to give this to you, to have some time to answer any questions you have, and, you know, allow some time for you to get familiar with it.
Then we'll discuss this the next meeting?
So depending on, I mean, I will, I will continue to provide you up revisions, as we have them, of the documents, and we can, we can continue to put it on the agenda for as long as you want. Until the Redevelopment Authority takes its vote first, there's nothing, you know, you wouldn't vote before they voted. So once they vote to kind of advance the plan to you, then it would come back on your agenda for, for discussion and a vote.
So, so, okay, so we can't vote on this anyway until that happens?
Right.
When is that going to happen? Do you have any idea?
I'm hoping it's not going to take too much longer, but we still are, the, the plan draft is not complete yet, so we, we still are putting it together. The Redevelopment Authority meets on December 12 again, I believe, so I'm, I don't know if it'll be ready by then.
And we'll have an update of these documents that you just gave us? Will they be revised, updated?
Yeah, so at, when, when I have the, when I have those revisions for you, then I'll, I'll email them out to you.
Okay.
So I really, I mean, if you have any questions about it, don't hesitate to ask me, but I, or if you, if there's anything you want to talk about right now, we certainly can. But as you're going through it, you know, don't, you know, don't worry about asking questions, because this is, you know, this is different, this is different than the types of plans we normally see here.
So you had said that one of our votes is for the, the law is in harmony with the master plan?
Right.
So, I didn't go through any of this shit, so is the master plan, what, what the master plan outlines, is that in this as well?
It is, so, it is. I don't have my copy with me, but can I borrow yours for a second?
I know this is still preliminary, but if you could-
Yeah. So. In Section 2, and I apologize, I mean, we haven't put together the, haven't put together the table of contents yet, because the page numbers keep changing, but right now, on, on what you have, in Section 2, it's called Project Area Eligibility, and I'll give you your copy back, Jim. Starting on page 13, there's a section-
You can use them, I'm using one.
Oh, okay. So there's a section called Planning and Redevelopment Efforts to Date, down at the very bottom of page 13. And then page 14 starts the list of kind of where this objective has been identified in your prior planning efforts. So we found reference to it in the Economic Development Strategies Plan that the town had done in 1995, the town master plan of 2001, the planning that went into the Route 44 project, the water engineering study, there have been market feasibility analysis, you adopted a DIF financing district, you built the water treatment plant, it was identified as a priority development site, we changed the zoning, it was noted in a comprehensive, a regional comprehensive economic development strategy plan, which is, which is the CEDS, that's what that acronym is, and then the CEDS was updated again, the market overview was updated. So that's kind of the out, that's kind of the outline of where we found reference to the planning for this site and for redeveloping this site, so that, that outlines kind of all of the efforts.
Any other questions before we move on? Do you have any questions, Kevin?
I don't, because I definitely want to be able to take, go through this and read this.
Okay. All right. No other questions, we'll move on to the articles for the April Town meeting, and I guess Will can rejoin us for that.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, we have kind of, I've kind of been developing a running list of items that have come up over the past year that we might want to take a look at, and I don't have specific article language for you for these yet. We have some time to put the language together and hold the hearings between now and Town Meeting, but I just- But I just want to get an idea from the board on whether or not these are things that you want to move forward to Town Meeting. And if you do want to move them forward, then I'll get to work on them and get the hearings going and get them on your schedule for the winter. And if you don't want to move forward with them, then I'll cross them off the list. A couple of things that have come up. One is a, one is the revision to your water resource protection district. So your water resource protection district is in section 4300 of your zoning bylaw. And I want to just read you very briefly the purpose. So the purpose of this section 4300 is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare by preserving the quality of ground and surface water which provides existing or potential water supply for the town's residents, cranberry growers, institutions, and businesses. And then the section goes on to outline what uses are prohibited and what uses are allowed by special permit. And your water res, if you, when you look at your zoning map, your water resource protection district is, is an overlay that actually is town-wide. So every, every lot in town is, is subject to this. And what, what your, what your district does is it regulates industrial and commercial uses, including landfills and hazardous materials, and protects against, you know, having them leach into the groundwater. Would it, but it's silent as to any sort of residential density. And because you have such a very limited area of public water supply system, because you have such a limited area of public water supply, obviously, most people have their own private well. So what happens is that if you are, if, if you are growing without necessarily limiting the effluent from houses, from residential land uses in, in septic, because there's no sewer at all. So there's very limited water and there's no wastewater. Everything is on-site. So because, because there's, because there's wells in, you know, in relatively close proximity to septic systems, then without some sort of density limitation on, on the effluent, you run into concerns about nitrate loading in, in people's drinking water. And nitrates are, they're, they're, they're major cause, the, the major health concern is that they cause blue baby syndrome. So they, they, you know, they, they prevent the red blood cells from, from being able to use oxygen correctly. And, you know, they, they cause essentially asphyxiation of the tissues of the body. So that's, that's the major concern for nitrates in water supplies. And because so many houses are served by private wells and because your water resource protection district is town-wide, it, it makes sense to take a look at what some other towns have done with residential densities. Because you're, you're fine on commercial and institutional, but you, uh, commercial, commercial and industrial, excuse me, but you're silent as to residential. And what is commonly used is a bedroom per square foot or gallons per day per square foot. And the, the most common calculation is 110 gallons per day, which is, which is equal to one bedroom under title, under Title V calculations, per 10,000 square feet of lot area. So, so if you have, you know, so if you have a 30,000 square foot lot, you have a, you're limited to a three-bedroom house in, on that lot. So it's a, you have the zoning district, and if this is something that you're interested in doing, we can add the language to, to limit the bedroom size, or limit the number of bedrooms and therefore the septic flow. It's something to think about. I did discuss it with the Board of Health in July. They, they were in favor of, of advancing this idea with you to Town Meeting. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to meet with them since because of some health concerns on that board. So I only had the one meeting with them in July, but we did talk about it. They did ask me to talk to you about it. This would be a zoning control. The Board of Health can, can do other things under their, under their septic rules and regulations to, to limit nitrogen as well. But this is the way that planning boards can do it, through zoning. So it's something to think about if you want to strengthen your water resource protection district. It will limit people's ability to build. If you have a 60,000 square foot lot, you're, you can't build more than six bedrooms. And so it's, it's, it's linking the size of the house directly to the size of the lot within the district.
Because by state rules and regulations, you have to go by 110 gallons per bedroom.
Right. So that's in Title V, so...
And which also regulates the size of your field.
Right.
In the sense that also with the soil absorption, too.
Right.
Yeah.
So this would go a step further and, and would limit onsite sewage to 110 gallons per day, per 10,000 square feet. So your system design would be based, so the size of your lot would drive your system design, which would, which would drive the number of bedrooms allowed in the house.
That's not already a state regulation?
Well, I mean, this, you can, you can design a system to fit on, you don't need 10,000 square foot. You don't need 10,000 square feet for the system. This is a density control.
Yeah.
This, I mean, you could, you don't need that much space to physically cite a, a leaching field and reserve area.
And so are the towns have adopted this?
Yes.
Because I've never seen this before. I, not that I recall. We just went by the state regulations for the number of bedrooms and 110 gallons per bedroom.
Right. So, I mean, this doesn't change anything with Title V. Title, Title V stays exactly the way it is. This is a zoning control that says that if you have, let's say, uh, let's say you have an undersized lot of 40, let's say you have an acre lot, right? Or 40,000 square feet. You, you would not be allowed, like, right now, you could build a, you could easily build a six-bedroom house on an acre lot. You, you have all the space in the world to design and construct your septic system. The addition of this would say, if you've got an acre, you can't build more than a four-bedroom house because of this water re, because of our, because of the water protection. Has nothing to do with Title V and, you know, treating the effluent. It's a, the density control solely for the purpose of water protection because of the proximity, or because of the prevalence, I should say, of on-site wells. So other towns have it, but it's usually only in cer, it's usually only in limited areas because many other towns provide public water. So they're only concerned about their wellheads. So there, there's a zone, there's a zone around the wellheads that limit the density in those areas because you're on a municipal system. But here, this, this is, this would, this is town-wide, this district is town-wide, and it's because of, it's because you don't have municipal water serving most of the people. Most of the people are, have private wells. So that's one, that's one thing to think about. I mean, and you can take all, you can take time to think about these, and if you don't want, you know, if you want some time to think about them, then we'll bring them back and talk about them at our next, on our next agenda.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Is there, um, do you know of any of the bylaws that are enacted by other towns that you can send us?
Mm-hmm.
That we can read them?
Yep.
Do they provide maps for those also?
Well, their zone, it, um, I mean, the zoning map will have the, will show the areas.
Okay.
So, uh, new lots are acre, acre and a half?
Right. Sixty, 60,000 square feet.
So it would just be the older lots?
No, it would even apply to, it would, it would apply to any lot you're doing right now. So, um, in, so a 60,000 square foot lot would be limited, you would, would have a cap of six bedrooms with this provision. And then for a subdivision, like we talked about earlier today, where it's an open space subdivision, where you have reduced lot size but open space, you would revert back to the yield plan because that should, and use those lot areas because you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily be punishing someone for the, for the cluster subdivision and the smaller lots because you have the open space right there balancing it out.
And through you, Mr. Chair, let me try to understand this. So this is going to be based on surface and not necessarily depth?
So it's, it's based strictly on lot area.
Right.
So however many square feet are in your lot, it gives you how many bedrooms you would have under Title V. So if you've got a 20,000 square foot lot, you've got two bedrooms under, under Title V with this, with this bylaw in place. Because it, a bylaw like this would, would, would say that you, you can't exceed 110 gallons per day, per 10,000 square feet.
So this would just be, it wouldn't pertain to existing homes, though?
It would. So this, this district is town-wide, it's in place, it exists. So changing this, you, we would have to create some sort of a appeal process. So essentially, if your house already exceeds those limits, you're, you're, you would become pre-existing non-conforming, you would be grandfathered.
Okay. Because you say, "My, I have a half-acre lot, I have three bedrooms."
Right.
So if that lot just existed, some, and somebody was to build a new home, they could only put two bedrooms.
Right.
And that would also, but how would that affect if somebody was expanding on their existing home?
Right. So...
It would restrict them.
It would restrict them. Something like this would definitely restrict that. So you would have to have a big enough lot to accommodate whatever your plans for expansion are.
If they were adding a bedroom, right?
If they were adding a bedroom.
But isn't that, just from my own knowledge, isn't that already controlled by Title V?
Title V, you just ha, you have to be able to locate the, the leaching field sized correctly. And you can, they don't need that much space. So your leaching field and your reserve area does, does not take up 10,000 square feet of lot area. So physically, it can be engineered to fit on a much smaller lot. This is a, this is strictly, purely a density control.
I need to look at it. So, yeah, so we're restricting the lot owner even more by this bylaw?
That's right.
Than by Title V.
Right.
Title V allows you to have more bedrooms, but this restricts you.
Right.
But like I said, most of the towns that I worked on, they had their own town water system.
Right.
So this, you, this wouldn't be a problem.
This would be, yeah, if, if you're, if you're on a public water supply, this is a moot issue. So this is, this whole issue has come up as a result of the proposed 40B off of Plymouth Street. So the, they were, the proposal was for three-bedroom houses on, I think, I think the lot sizes averaged between 8 and 15,000 square feet. So that, so it was a large number of bedrooms. It was a large, it was a large number of bedrooms on, I think the lot was 17 acres, but I, I don't remember the exact area. But it was, the proposal was for 39 three-bedroom houses on 17 or so, approximately 17 acres. And, and the concern was that, you know, the neighboring homes would ha, would see a negative impact in their wells. Because this sub, this proposed subdivision would have been tied into town water. So in this particular case, the water serving the new lots would have been provided through the North Carver Water District. But the surrounding house lots are, are served by private, private wells. And the concern was that the high density of houses that could have been built there under this project would have caused nitrate pollution in, in the neighboring walls. So that is, that is the, that's the reason why this is coming up before you.
Although there are septic systems that, that take out the nitrates now.
Yeah, there are deni...
More expensive.
There are denitrifying septic systems, they are more expensive, they use electricity, there, there are costs involved with them. But there are systems that have been well-documented to reduce nitrogen, which is, which is the side of the equation that the Board of Health would have to do. And in their, in rewriting their rules and regulations to require denitrifying septic systems in cases where they need to be. This is a, this, what I'm, this zoning example is a very broad, you know, a very broad brush affecting everybody in town. So there are other ways to deal with it on, through the septic system that is designed and installed. And in, and in the towns that do have this type of density requirement, as I said, this density limit, it's, it's in areas that are around public wellheads. It's, it's not found town-wide generally. It's a water resource protection district that is limited to the area surrounding the public wells.
I think it's something we should think about, anyway.
And I will, I will send you the example language, definitely.
Okay.
The next one on the list is, we have talked, we talked about it briefly over the summer. We, I'd like to bring, I'd like you to bring a zoning map change to Town Meeting, to rezone two parcels on the, on the Carver-Plimpton Town Line. So the lots are, the lots are split. The southern portions of the lots are in Carver and the northern portions of the lots are in, in Plimpton. And on the Plimpton side of the line, the lots, these two lots are zoned residential. And on the Carver, once you, once you pass into Carver, the, those portions of these lots are zoned Green Business Park. So these are also, these are also in this area right here. It's right, right here in this, in this wiggly line. It's this land right here, up to the north of that line on the, on the urban renewal map. And the reason we, the reason I'm asking you to do this is as a result of the discussions from the urban renewal plan efforts, it's clear that those two lots, or those two, you know, parsh, the, the... know, partial, the, those, the part of those lots that are in Carver will never be used for, for this purpose, for industrial purposes. And there's no reason to have them be zoned Green Business Park. It, you know, split zoning causes difficulties for owners with refinancing and sales and, and everything, so it would, it will be a much cleaner solution to have, you know, they've come out of the, they've come out of the boundary for the urban renewal plan, they're not gonna be used for any of those purposes. And it'll be a, a cleaner solution to have those be rezoned to residential agricultural district. And that way, the zoning district matches on both sides of the town line for those lots.
That would be a, a reduction in taxes to these people, too?
The, I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how the, the structures, the structures are, on both lots are in Plimpton. The land would probably be slightly reduced, but that's, the, the assessing department would have to run those calculations. But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be rezoning, it would, the rezoning would not affect the property where the structures are. And they are currently both, I mean, they are houses, so, you know, they're, they're, they're zoned residential and have houses constructed on them on one side of the town line, and they're zoned Green Business Park on the other side. So, I'd like you to consider taking it to town meeting to rezone the Carver portion of the lots to residential.
I think that's a, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Anybody else have any further discussion?
Okay, so that one is a definite yes to move forward.
Now, do we have to meet and discuss that with, with the town of Plimpton Planning Board?
You don't, the, you don't. The town line is the edge of your zoning map. So, when you, when they were, so they were rezoned to Green Business Park in two thousand and ten, and you're just undoing that for these two properties. The third one is, so, we, so, the building commissioner and I have noticed a little bit of a discrepancy with your use schedule, which is twenty-two thirty, it's, it's the chart that, it's the chart that looks like this, that tells you all the uses in the different districts. You don't have, on this schedule, you don't have medical office listed. You have office, you just, you just have plain old office, and you have hospitals. And we had a medical office come in not too long ago. And we noticed in your parking schedule, which is in, which is in three-three-three-zero, which is this table later on, your parking table does have medical office. So, um, you're, so the bylaw is telling us how to deal with parking for medical offices, which is good, because they do need more parking than just general office uses. So, we've, we've got the parking side down, but my question is, do you, do you want to allow, do you want to allow medical offices in all the districts that you allow just plain offices? So, right now, you allow offices in highway, commercial, general business, village business, special permit use in the village district, allowed in the Green Business Park, allowed in industrial A, B, and C, and a special permit use in, what is AP? I can't remember AP. Airport. It's a special, it's a special permit use in airport. So, if you want to allow med, medical office tends to have more traffic and more impacts than just, like, a lawyer or some sort of general office use. So, if you want to allow medical offices in all of these zoning districts, we don't have to make any changes. But if you want to limit where medical offices can go, we need to add a line in here as a use and decide what districts it, it should go in.
What do, what's your recommendation? What do, what do the towns do?
Um, you know, this is really something that's, this is really something that's case by case for the, for the town. A lot of, I mean, for towns that have, like, a hospital, there, there's usually a district around the hospital where medical offices are encouraged to locate, or medical offices are encouraged to locate in, you know, kind of near highways or, or on major roads and stuff. Your, I mean, your business districts are so small and limited anyway that there's just not a lot of space. So, I think, I think you would, I think you'll be fine letting them go in all of these districts, just treating them as office, but it's a conversation I wanna have, it's a conversation I want to have with you, I wanna bring this to your attention. You, the bylaw is calling out medical offices for a different parking generation, which it, it needs to do, they need a lot more parking. But, I just wanna be, I just wanna double-check, I don't wanna assume that, that you're okay with medical offices going in, in all the districts that offices are going in.
Offhand, I don't, really don't see any, any, any reason. Those districts? Yeah.
So, it would be-
Those districts being so small.
It would be a special permit.
Yeah.
It would be a special permit in a village district. So, that would, so, if it were, if a medical office building wanted to go in a village district, they would have to come to you by, for a special permit, and you would have to decide if this, if this works or not.
They'd also have to have enough property for parking, too.
They would have to meet the parking generation numbers, yes.
So, that would kinda limit to?
Yeah, it does. The, the parking will really limit where they can go. Do you guys just wanna, do, do you not wanna worry about this until?
I wanna think about it.
Okay, we'll leave this one on the list as a question.
Just 'cause I'm, I'm worried, I'm concerned about some places in the RA district that we might want them to-
To be able to go?
Concerned that if they were, they were going to go into the RA district?
They're not allowed.
They're not allowed now, but if there was some, some areas in the RA district that could handle the traffic and the impacts.
Well, in that case, well, in that case, you should rezone the land to, you wouldn't, you wouldn't add the use into the district, you would rezone that property as a different district. That would be my-
Would that be, would that be considered spot zoning, though?
Well, I mean, there would have to, it would have to be, it couldn't necessarily just be one lot, it would have to be an area where this makes sense to do. I, I would not recommend, 'cause once you put the use as allowable in the district, then it's kind of, then it's allowable anywhere in the district, so, I-
So, it's not allowable now, but because of the language?
It's not, well, right now, you don't have it listed, so, the building commissioner has to make an interpretation. He, he has to interpret your bylaw as, what is it most similar to? And it's most similar, it's most similar to office, in your list, it's most similar to office and to hospital. And he has to kind of see where hospitals are allowed, where offices are allowed, and, and kind of make that judgment call. And he can continue to do that, we can continue to do that, but I want you to know that it's not an, but it's not identified as a land use in your list. And I mean, if you, if you wanted to, if you wanted to keep it, you know, if you, if you wanted to keep it in, as allowable in the same districts where offices allowed, I would even recommend that you clarify your list to be office, comma, including medical office, and make it very clear that this is not an oversight, because medical office buildings do have more impacts than, than just general office. So, it's something, just think about it, we can talk about it some more.
Now, that would include, like, a dentist, doctor?
Yeah.
X-ray?
Yep.
MRI?
Yep.
Things like that?
Yep, all of that, yeah, any, anything where there's a medical license or, you know.
Kinda like that last option that you mentioned, to just add it, too, but everybody can, we can think about it.
Yeah, and that, that is perfectly fine, as long as you're okay with it going in all of those districts. If you want it to not be allowed in any of those districts, we need to make it a separate line and then exclude it, exclude it from some, if you want it excluded. So, just think about it. Um, the last zoning one is, we've run into this a couple times with hobby kennels. So, right now, your definition is, for a hobby kennel, shall mean a single premises with a collection of six to ten dogs, three months or older, that are maintained for any purpose, and where fewer than four litters per year are raised. And what's been happening is that, um, homeowners, people who own more, who own more than five dogs, who own six dogs or seven dogs, are coming in to license them with the town clerk, and they're getting sent down to you for a hobby kennel permit, because technically, it's a collection of between six to ten dogs, so, and they're being maintained at, at a single premises at, at the house for any purpose. I mean, their purpose is that pets, um, and so, they are coming to you for a special permit, you know, it costs them five hundred dollars in fees, and they have to have a hearing, and we have to place an ad in the paper, and then we send a certified letter to all their neighbor, neighbors. So, I, my recommendation is that you, that we add an exclusion to your hobby kennel definition, essentially to, to exempt dogs that are kept as pets by a single person.
So, right now, we don't have any number, I mean, and you can keep as many pets as you want now?
Right now, you can keep five dogs, but once you get, once you hit six, you're, you have to get a special permit from the planning board.
So, that would mean a homeowner could own six or more dogs, as many as, as they wanted?
Um, between six to ten.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, ten's the limit?
Ten's the limit. Once, once you get over ten, then you're in a commercial kennel, and, I mean, no one, it had, it's become a, it's become a problem for the hobby kennels. No one's come in saying that they're keeping more than ten dogs as pets. So, I think for right now, if you want, if you wanna change it, just change hobby kennel, 'cause it, people are coming in with six, and technically, they're getting caught in here. So, what do you guys think about that?
Now, what's a hobby kennel again? Is that, hobby kennel, is that a business, or is that private, just pets that people have?
I mean, I think the intention here is that it's a business, but it says shall mean a single premises, so, any, any place with a collection of six to ten dogs, three months or older, that are maintained for any purpose. So, it, it's, I mean, it, it would definitely catch a homeowner who, who wants to keep six dogs.
And the hobby kennel could also breed the, the dogs, that was also part of it, right? So, they can have a certain amount of litters, so it's like they were doing it-
And we're-
For, as a business.
Right, and where fewer than four litters per year are raised.
So, you're saying that people come in and they have over six dogs, and now they have to pay a five hundred dollar fee to have their six dogs?
Right, and they have to come to you for a special permit, even though they're, they're not running a business. I mean, if they're running a business, they need to come to you because you need to talk about parking and traffic and signs and lighting and that kinda stuff, but, but that's because it's a business, not because of the number of dogs.
How would we know that it wasn't a business?
I mean, people are coming in and, and saying, "I've got six dogs," and we just, I mean, that's what we have to go on.
Yeah. Let's see the language.
Okay, I'll put it, I'll put, I'll write it up, and you guys can decide if you wanna move forward with that or not.
Any other questions, comments?
I mean, up until now, it was five, but that leaves it open between four and ten.
Well, it's, people are only-
Before, you gotta go for the special permit.
Oh, before, you don't, between zero and five dogs, you don't have to get the special permit. Once you hit the sixth dog, that's when the special permit is triggered.
We're gonna think about this.
I'll, I'll draft up the language to, for the amendment, so you can see, and we can talk about, you know, we, you can see if you wanna do this or not.
Are there a lot of people in town that own six or more dogs?
Well, we've had two come in.
Two, yeah.
And then the last, the last item, it's not a zoning article, but eventually, the planning board will have to review the updated master plan, which is getting close to being done. And I, it's my recommendation that if you, if you approve the master plan, then, then you take it to town meeting to have town meeting approve it as well. So, that, but that's not a zoning article, so it won't need a hearing or anything. And the master plan, we do have a final draft, the master plan committee will meet in December, and then it probably will come to you in January for you, for you guys to look at.
So, that's it?
I have one thing. A reference to, um, commercial, commercial building, businesses or general businesses that have a marquee, and then they have individual signs. Someone, I'm gonna bring it out, is the landmark building. That, um, that contractor that still has a sign out there that we told him had to be removed because it was against the bylaw, it's still out there. But we did talk to them about discussing on how we were gonna, looking at trying to change that in the signed bylaw, um, at least have a discussion about it. Right now, um, my question is, is what, what's happening with the existing sign that's still sitting there? 'Cause obviously, they're not gonna remove it.
So, I know that the building commissioner has gone by a number of times, and the store has not been open. So, right now, it is an enforcement issue, the building commissioner is aware, and it's, he has been stopping to knock on the door and see, and talk to them, but they, the store has not been open when, when he's been stopping by. So, we do hope to catch them at some point when they are open and have them, you know, have them take it in.
But I think we should look at the bylaw on that. We said that we would, so. That's it.
All right, on other business, we have, uh, planning board member notes. Anybody have anything that they would like to, uh, say this evening?
I hope everybody out there had a happy Thanksgiving with their families.
All right, go on to the minutes then, of October eleventh and fifteenth of two thousand All right, go on to the minutes then of October 11th and 15th of 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 11, 2016, as written.
You have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So go on to October. And Jim's abstaining because he wasn't here. Okay, so the 15th.
When was the last time we met?
So Bruce, Jim, Kevin, and Chad were here.
So everybody but, so Will, you abstaining?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. November 15.
I'll second that.
Motion second, those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And Will's abstaining because he wasn't here that evening. Correspondents?
Nothing this time.
Next meeting date will be December 13th, 2016. We have, what do we have on the agenda?
So on the agenda, it'll just be the further discussion on the, on those town meeting articles. I don't have any-
That's going to be December 6th?
December 13th?
No. What did we, what was brought up earlier about December 6th?
That was the holiday party invitation.
No, the last meeting for the Williams Brothers.
Oh, if, if you needed to meet, if you needed to meet, December 6th would have been the last.
Okay.
But it's, but you voted it tonight, so you don't need to go to the last meeting.
All right, so, so we will meet December 13th then.
We can talk about your zoning articles and then if any ANRs or signs come in. There won't be time to advertise for any special permits or site plans. But yeah, right now, we can, you know, we can talk about zoning.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion a second, those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everyone.